Oh, hey, Katie. I'll take you off the list. Jennifer's.
Yes, name.
You all there?
Yep.
We're gonna call this being your order. We start off with a pledge of allegiance. I pledge allegiance to the United States of America and to the republic which stands one nation under God indivisible liberty and justice for all. Okay, this meeting has been posted in all normal voting places. Need a motion to approve the agenda? You have a motion, do we have a second?
A second.
Still a second? Any discussion? Hearing none, all in favor say aye.
Aye, bye.
All at the same time, motion's carried. We're on to minutes. We've got four meetings here, we can move on to one more.
I'll make a motion to approve the minutes of Monday, September 28th at 5:00 PM, closed session. Monday, September 28th at 6:00 PM, open session. Thursday, October 8th at 4:45, closed session. And Wednesday, October 14th at 6:00 PM.
Any more motion, do we have a second?
A second.
Do we have a motion, a second? Any additions or corrections to those minutes? Then all in favor say aye.
Aye.
All at the same time, motion's carried. We are on to showcase.
No, they're not, no.
Okay. Financial important billings. Bill, Joe. Phil, you still with us?
Yeah, sorry, I audio cut out for a second, sorry, right back.
Nobody can do it as good as you.
Alright. Make a motion to approve our general payroll check number 553789, amount of $173.60. Check number 553790, amount of $36.20. Direct deposit number 90052778, 90052880, amount of $141,783.38. Direct deposit number 920052881, 920052982, amount of $154,678.50. Wire transfers for payroll liabilities, wire number 2020075, 00102, amount of $192,655.40. For total payroll of $589,002.20. Account payable check number 54466, 54499, amount of $30,379.82. AP wire transfer 202020079, 0200081, amount of $3,536.20. First card transaction number 9020, amount of $42,020.10. APH direct deposit numbers 2021, 00020, 021, 0023, amount of $51.80. Total accounts available of $176,987.62. And total disbursement of $765,993.94.
We have a motion, a second. I have to report Bill listing. Are there any questions? Hearing none, all in favor say aye.
Aye, aye.
All at the same time, motion's carried. We are on to delegations to be heard.
Nothing virtually.
And. Hey, JJ, you had the idea, just see if anybody wrote on that thing to say that they want to be. Oh, no, there's no need. Okay, so don't let that speak to us. So we are past delegations to be heard. And we are on to. District committee.
Yep, so I have one donation of $1.40 from the Kent family who sponsored some meet with me activities. So at primary school, so I mean, thank you to Cindy and Justin family for that donation. So just looking for a motion to accept the donation from the Kent family as presented.
You have a motion, do we have a second?
A second.
We have a motion, a second. Any discussion? All in favor then say aye.
Aye.
All at the same time, motion's carried. We're on personnel action. Renovation.
Mrs. O'Connell has decided to retire after 20 years with the district. She submitted her letter of retirement effective October 3rd. Like thanks, Mrs. O'Connell for her 20 plus years of service to our district and wish her the best of luck soon for retirement. After that motion, I would like to replace Mrs. O'Connell with Angela Locke to refill that position. Angela started the year in first grade and is willing to continue in that role throughout the year, which is a great transition for our kids. They can just continue the role and has done a fantastic job thus far. So just looking for a motion to approve the individual teaching contract for Angela Locke. It is a pre-ready contract starting October 3rd. The date that Mrs. O'Connell was in retirement there.
That's a first resignation first.
I'll make a motion to approve the retirement request for Julie O'Connell effective October 3rd, 2020.
Second.
We have a motion, a second. Thank you for her for 20 years. All in favor then say aye.
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 All at the same time, motion's carried. Contract.
I'll make a motion to approve the individual teaching contract for Angela Locke.
Motion, we have a second by Phil. Any discussion? All in favor then say aye.
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 All at the same time, motion's carried. You have any information?
Sure, just wanted to update the families and the districts regarding the intermediate school remodel update. Last month, we did approve CG Schmidt to be our construction manager on the project. And since then, we continue to work with CG Schmidt as well as EUA, as well as working due as we start to prepare cost estimates, detailed cost estimates. So we can take a look at the complete scope of the project, making sure that we've got the dollar amounts and begin to work backwards from all the things we want to do from that standpoint. We continue to work with our staff and kind of engage them as well when needed as it relates to whether it be tweaks because we've already met with them in each of the areas, in the areas of art, music, maker, and a lot of those faiet, as well as those areas to kind of to continue to expand in the steam areas too as well. So that is moving very, very quickly, it seemed like, and we should have some cost estimate details the first week or second week. So so far, we are on track with our calendar for that to all begin very, very soon, so it seems like. So that's remodel update. Update on COVID-19, obviously, we continue to update our district dashboard that gets updated twice a week on Tuesdays and Fridays. And things are looking very positive for our district as we continue to kind of get through a hump, you know, and as it goes to staff and quarantines and isolation for kids and staff as well. But as a county, things were really demonstrating that school-based exposures and infectious rates of students, student to student, student to staff, or staff to staff, staff to student is very, 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 very small. Very similar to the newest study that came out of Madison as it relates to kind of they were they studied football and there's not a lot of transmission in between from student to student, even during athletics. And, you know, we think of athletics, we think of faiet and some of those things that were dewy outdoors. So we're, things are looking really, really positive on the aspect of school and really supporting the notion of being here five days a week. So we're really excited about that. So we continue to work with the health department to make sure that, you know, we contact them, we do all of our own contact tracing, whenever it's a student or a staff member, and then we communicate right away with them as well. So but, you know, we continue to roll, last Friday was a nice day off for our teaching staff. And on Thursday was some more work time just to kind of prepare, looking ahead about what the future is for these upcoming weeks too as well. So, yeah, we're real positive about where we're sitting here. We are finishing up the quarter, so we'll be nine meetings in at the end of Friday, so that's. So Ron, what's the total number of building subs that we have now? You mentioned a while ago that we brought another couple out. Yep, we are hoping to, or we are going to be bringing on two more building subs starting in November to kind of help us get through the, some of the cold and flu season as we go there. So we have, that would bring us up to a total of approximately five building subs that we can use to cover for staff, that's your support staff and your teaching staff as well. And then on top of that, we've got our instructional specialists, we've got, you know, Dawn Baumgartner, who is filling in too as well. So we've got a lot of people yet to be able to deploy. I feel real confident that we have 10 individuals at any one time that we're able to call on to really fill in because now you're starting to see some school districts close or buildings closed because of lack of support staff to cover people who are substitutes to cover the effectiveness of face-to-face learning as well. So are all five of those building subs full-time then? All five of those will be full-time starting in November, correct. Three of them right now are full-time and we continue to lean on our specialists and Dawn and other people. Today, we've added our instructional aides, which is great, we had two instructional aides for leading for teachers today, which, you know, thank you very, very much for us to do that. So, and we're just. Go ahead.
And then two additional ones would be that you have brought that will be starting out in November, they're not through our payrolls, we're just, we're doing that through teachers on call, so correct?
Correct, yep, that is all teachers on call. They're not contracted employees.
Okay.
So is there compensation still with them? Is it at normal?
No, we have raised it to, we raised the rates, yep, we have. If they're here every day, they're subbing course every day, they're committing to us every day.
I think it's incredible and really impressive how flexible a lot of the staff have been, really in supporting each other and people are catching up for whatever reason. We're really, really lucky. So I feel like it's creating something, you know, every few days with a great level of attention down or a building or a portion of a district because they can't give enough people in the building. It's really, really commendable.
Yeah, our, our support, all, everybody's catching in, which is great, and they're, they're not complaining, which is great. They understand what they need to do and they've been ultimately flexible and that.
I think we have to thank our parents.
What was the daily rate for the teachers on call building? Building subs went to $150.
I'd say, you have to thank their parents too, to their behavior. Very, very instrumental in keeping them there.
Yeah, our parents are really taking it seriously, if there's one or two symptoms, they're holding them back, obviously, two symptoms, they have to, they're holding, there's a button of caution. And again, kudos to our staff who have been taking them on as well, those students on in the virtual world, bums in and out for four, five, six, seven, eight, nine, 10 days, sometimes just one or two. But again, very commendable to our entire community or educational community to make sure this is working.
So I just want to kind of summarize what we went over in my meeting, that was last Monday. So we talked in a lot more detail, I'm going to be, I'm going to just kind of summarize tonight, but we did get all of our final budget numbers in from the state. So overall, we received slightly more than we anticipated and our tax, we went down from, it went down to $4.35 from the estimated $4.40 of the annual meeting. So our enrollment counts also did decrease slightly, but I think that's kind of really just typical, but I think next year will be that, that. So revenue expense reports are attached for the first quarter of this school year as well. In committee, we have discussed our global line items, but I would say overall, we are where we can expect to be at this point in the year. We have reserved $312,000 in fund balance after the last year. And that was done intentionally, just knowing that what was going to come is a big expense of. So with that amount set aside, our goal is still to present a balanced budget. So if that is a budget of, you know, over $300,000, but with kind of having that carryover, what we're going to be, you know, it's sensible. Next, we did talk about the SS school level report. So the SS report is a report that was made last year from the PIA. And the main goal of their report is just to see how much money is distributed on these buildings within the same district. So for money, you know, the two buildings. And there's different grade levels and buildings, so it's not going to be as much of a comparison comparability report for us as it would be for other districts. But DPI's goal is to eventually publish the financial data along with the school report card, so you can all combine and have all that data available. So that's the goal, that's what we're working towards. We talked about summer school, and as we know, this year with the virtual, we shared the program, summer school attendance was doubtful for us in first volume. And so that also caused swallows coming in to get significant done as well. So everything was still possible, but it was less so than five years. And the last thing that we talked about was food service. So our food service program is doing well, school lunch, freedom, as like the school lunch that's running by the U.S.C.A. is at forty for all students and it will be per student. So we've had a lot more participation than we have here in the past. So our food service made a profit of just under $5,000 per September, which is really good for the school year because with all this starting now and all the extra, usually we're at a small deficit for September. So this thing is meaningful.
Any questions? Thank you, April. Student achievement?
Yes.
Yeah, so we actually met three times this past month, so and worked through a variety of topics. So thank you for Katie, Phil, and Jennifer for coming on in three times, so to get some things going on in this aspect. So first thing was the science adoption update, Mary Iwansky, our student innovation coordinator, is leading that charge, continuing to work with individual teams as well as some teachers as well across the district. As this is a little bit different than an adoption year where we can't bring everybody together traditionally in our, our adoption format. So a big thank you to our staff who will continue to pilot and prepare documents and prepare a new curriculum that'll be ready for the board coming April for hopefully an adoption for the 21, 22 school year. So we'll continue to engage and keep student achievement committee active in that too as well. So we also took a look at human growth and development and with that adoption, that adoption is very, very different than all the other adoptions we have as it relates to really bringing in our community, bringing in multiple stakeholders across our community and engaging in human growth and development topics. So the committee is recommending that we pause the adoption until the 21, 22 school year, where hopefully we can bring those outside people from our community into our schools again and formally meet in the evening so we can look at, review, and develop a new people growth and development program for the entire district. So the piece two that we spent a lot of time on was the culture and social awareness update. As we know, last February, the board kind of tasked the student achievement committee, they kind of take a look at some things about, you know, how can we continue to bring in global awareness as it relates to other perspectives, as it relates to culture and social issues that are happening right now. So lots of conversations and today we've kind of started to talk about our next steps. And our next big step is to begin to, hey, we want to highlight a team to start to look at about what we as educators can do, it's kind of starting to do some self-discovery and really investigating school-based global awareness. So that this team can continue to then bring that to the whole team, the whole district, and then begin to move into some more critical opportunities that might be in front of us too as well. So a lot of pictures and a lot of prioritizing, but ultimately we settled in on developing our staff first, then moving into the student critical opportunities that might be there from a grade level, grade level perspective. So that kind of summarizes that work, we've met three times talking about that too, so thank you very, very much. Educator effectiveness for 2021, we did mention, we kind of talked about, you know, do we want to slide a little bit on the student learning objective? But ultimately, through conversations, it's kind of something we do anyway, as we take a look at student achievement and setting goals and really monitoring that. So from an educator effectiveness standpoint, things will remain the same, we'll continue to have our SLOs, the PPGs basically, we'll just kind of take a look at and put that underneath the umbrella of virtual learning, and we're all going to kind of take a look at that. But then ultimately continue on those formal observation cycles as indicated in our student handbook, our staff handbook, but as well as what's indicated by the statements. Had some discussions around virtual learning and just kind of some updates on how things are going. We continue to hopefully meet as much as we can, parent meets and student meets through our virtual learning platform, but we continue to work with our staff to make sure that we can continue to build a really nice platform for our students as well as accommodate students and families in that virtual learning platform. Finally, another topic that we discussed was staffing for the 21, 22 electives, particularly as we know the intermediate remodel update. The committee is recommending that we look at and plan on staffing a full-time employee who can kind of basically work with current managers. So we have makers based over at the primary school and basically set in another position that can kind of work shaky, but ultimately also taking a look at and seeing what we can possibly do as it relates to specific electives here utilizing our new space, which is going to be ready to go into 21, 22 school year as well too. So that's just something that the committee asked us to build into our budget as we start to think about the next school year and staffing this area and then maybe to start thinking about programs that we can get in front of our kids. So I think that's kind of a quick little update about what happened over three D's. Alright, so Becca and I already went through this, just some great, great stuff here. So she does a great job of making all these pictures look so much better than when I dropped them in there. So just a lot of different things going on in both schools. On the left-hand side, you'll see one of our students, they're actually working with a virtual student, putting together some stuff in science class. And then the upper right-hand corner, Grant Paul Puelin comes in every year with his fossil collection for our sixth graders during their, their science unit. So here we have a student who's actually doing the fossil tour with one of our students who's virtual, so he's kind of showing that virtual student all the different things there. And then Becca has the tree that I want to be.
So in the top center there, there's just, there's a lot going on for all of our kids throughout the district, which is great, you know, little drop trees. You have the top of the weekly green that kind of shifted this year from last year where there was a lot more speakers engagement. Now this year, the project, kind of project base, and this group here with more kids, they have site to like run like PTO pumpkin contest that's happening, Jeff Line and everything. So they're creating posters and doing that, still you can see they're distancing, trying to still publicize that we have opportunities for kids when they can't as much collaborate as well. The bottom two are students, that's one thing that we continue to see is kids still playing chess with that role, and you'll see the syllabus of student achievement. We're really proud that kids are really understanding and working on, especially in writing and reading, that it takes more than one time to read a book over and over is what we want to see. And then also to fall in love with writing, this year writing looks different in our, with our teachers and our students, especially in the fact that they are one using post, creating post-on-demand assessments to gauge where they're at. You also, the kids have the checklist and they're monitoring themselves as writers, so a lot of great things happening there. This is a first grade writer, and she is writing about a how-to, so she's an expert, so we're an area professional writer, so that's where it comes.
And we're also proud of our teachers, and the upper left-hand corner-ish there is Miss Frye, she is doing a read aloud with the virtual students there, being a part of the whole action that's going on there, which is, which is amazing when, when Becca and I have a chance to watch our teachers as they're juggling both of the inverse and the virtual learning. It's just, it's an amazing thing to see, and they've made their trips through the classrooms and includes, make sure that they include the, the virtual students as well. Oh, and then the one in the middle, there happens to be Mrs. Kowish's math class, she's jumping in to, to help with a virtual student having to have a problem. While the other students are discussing the concept that she had just put up on, on the smartboard, it was pajama day for Red Ribbon Week, that's why we're in jammies there.
So you have still having some of those spirits from Weeks last week, first you went red, red and red, that's a common. Yes, but at the same time, we continue, you can see here, this is a lot, we've been moving forward with the SEL, not only the student and adults on the upper right-hand side, yes. And there is Mr. Sutter, Mr. Mask, and Miss Prieske leading our staff with some of that adult SEL, which also will just find games that we're going to play with kids. So that's really important because to be vulnerable as an adult is fun, but it also puts us over on the job. And you can see here down here, we have Miss. We're doing some running records here, and it's Craig seeing the doorway, trying to figure out a space of how he locked her kids, still staying distant. So you can see there that he's giving that, and then the other bottom one is Miss Up, and she's comparing with the student, really being intentional and planning and also deciding how much time do I spend with the student, especially on a day when I only get 15 minutes of close contact. So being able to prioritize that is kind of what they've been doing so often, everyone there's highlights.
And then we added some of our, our staff here that sometimes we, we don't really speak of as much as we should. So upper right-hand corner are our cafeteria ladies that appear at the intermediate school, they are just, they're phenomenal. And then a number of our custodial staff, and then some people that I don't know because they're primary school and I don't get over there very often.
That yellow one, that's Dr. Ross and Jordan and Donovan, and they're building the chef's. And then just the, also our, our, I continue to say our kitchen is just amazing, the choices, the food that's coming out, and knowing that our families now can have, or through the rest of the year, a free lunch. I think that is something that really is equitable practice, it allows for everyone to use that, we've seen the numbers of lunches going up, which is good, kids trying it out, and I know sometimes students say to, I would never have eaten this before, and I'm like, yep, that's good, I know, I did taste it. So they do just a great job and they really are, you're training and fostering that idea of the kids are able to choose, so we have lots of great things there for some of our other, other staffs.
Yeah, Wednesday, I walked into the kitchen and I said, ladies, I'm not exactly sure what it is that you made, but the kids really liked chicken wings and the mac and cheese, and they want it every single day. Well, they decided that they cannot do that every single day, but it was something that the kids are definitely looking forward to. Well, they decided that they cannot do that every single day, but it was something that the kids are definitely looking forward to. Today was the national chicken sandwich, which is kind of, the kids just go nuts over that over here, so.
And they go, so it's nice that you get three choices even at a primary level. That is very unheard of in schools. So knowing that they offer that here is another thing that stands out to me for emergency. Also, now, primary school, this is what we've been focusing on. I know that Ron spoke to the student achievement committee and some of that. These are just some other things that we're looking at as professional priorities. Our instructional practices probably have been our biggest learning curve. Number one, how do you teach face-to-face in a reality that you can't always small groups, especially at the elementary level? That is how we do most of our teaching is in guided reading groups and all these collaborative practices were formed small groups based on where they're at. And that has become a little more difficult, but today's a lot more planning. The full-time virtual learning and the temporary virtual learning, those are two different things. People who choose to be virtual learning for the year or for a big chunk of time are met with and kind of went through some of those hiccups and hurdles that figuring that out during the onset of school year and then temporary is constantly coming in going. Sometimes it's a day, sometimes it's two weeks. And it just is this upheaval of instructional practices. I'm glad to say that I hear staff saying that they feel like they're in a group. You've been trying to problem solve around like what, how can we support you? What do you need? But there's been a lot of positive energy around that. We've also talked about core planning that's been looking at the group, like what do we have for the entire four or the grade level? And then how do we start using our assessments? We use running records, aims, that's something new here as a new assessment for our early, our littles, our 5K and first grade, we're using the aims on screeners. And then MAPS still second through fourth grade. And then writing, that's the other assessment. So those are all things that we're trying to use that assessment to plan for not only their core development, but then how do we move students forward individually? And then social emotional learning, this has been that big work, push that we did last year into now, how do we see that come to fruition? And we have second step implemented, it's every day about twenty, twenty-five minutes at least in a classroom. I noticed that people are very consistent, they're running through that, which we are seeing the outcomes also, where does that come in other places as well? Including those unstructured times, recess and fourth grade is bumping up there, stepping out type of way to problem solve. That's one I think they're going to be working on as well as the fourth grade. Responsive classrooms, the morning meeting integration, Jackie Cryeski and myself have been doing a lot of work around that, developing our staff on those early Wednesdays that staff come in at seven thirty-five. That's been a lot of fun to see that happen. And then we launched the onward, which is the adult side of really getting to know your social emotional ability, build your resilience. And how our task for the district is really to read chapter five, be here now. And it aligns to this month of what we are really going for this, to be here now.
So this looks rather similar, so I copied Becca. But just talking about the same sorts of things. The, the kids going in and out virtually is different than those kids that are, that are virtual for a longer period of time. It is interesting watching the teachers carry around their Chromebook from time to time. Like when they're going to have groups of kids work together and all of a sudden, Becca's going to be working with a virtual student and another virtual student, just seeing how they're doing that. Focus on ones and two content areas of teachers here. And the intermediate school either have one content area they're teaching, at the most they have two. Now, there are some teachers that have all four grade levels, so there's that that's going on. And then aspire testing is coming in November. That aligns with the ACT and that will be some great information that will come from there. The social emotional learning aspect over here in second step is different. We do that on Wednesday mornings, but it is integrated into the classroom as well. In fact, we have been talking, especially last Wednesday, we started talking about where can we be really intentional about putting those lessons in, not just on that Wednesday, but in the other days as well. They have been doing that. The teachers have been doing that, but now let's, let's try and focus on maybe it's social studies this week, science next week, and so on. I also have charged the teams to let me know when I can do my first virtual assembly. You guys know how much I like to do my assemblies and we can't do that just based upon our, our current reality. But I do want to have a virtual assembly with the kids that goes along with the units or the lessons that are going on in our second step. And the staff here is also working on chapter five of the onward launch.
So student achievement focus, now this is like looking at the data comes back to, talking about that SLO and where people are at. Is what, what data do we really use? We can see in reading, writing, and math that lists a bunch of them there. It's developmentally appropriate where we adjust those. I think that's why at the primary level, writing and SLO is kind of what we are doing. So it wasn't added more words per se. Because we really want to measure how we know that all kids are making gains and even closing the obstacle game. So you can see we have a lot of things going on there, whether it's reading, the running records. That was a little bit more tricky this year, just because, especially in the virtual world, and those that were virtual would probably say that sometimes parents had their, their student come in to us before school or after school when we had provided for that. Or otherwise, they did unwrite virtually as well. We have in writing, I talked about those post and pre-on-demand, the teacher's notes that were taken there. And then for math, we're really looking at pre and post tests, aims against screeners in both reading and in MAPS. MAPS, two-four, that's not a change. And then we're also looking at teacher's notes. Something that we've been trying to align ourselves with and collecting data too is literacy is our primary focus at the primary level. So making sure that we are looking at every way we can engage kids in a lot of activities around sight words. Whether that be, I know at 5K, we're looking at phonics, a new phonics program we rolled out this year, which was an added thing on, which has been really successful, we stay out there. But also then aligning which snack words, whole windows, script words that we want to see. So families will be seeing more of that as well, coming their way. Now that it's aligned, kindergarten through second grade. And what is the data telling us? And I would say that there's been a lot of growth where you just pulled it, I know Ron, myself, Lori Larson, Abby Clavandi, we all got together and we were looking at some of that data and what is it saying to us in each grade and looking at the cohort? There's a lot of growth in the first eight weeks. Part of that is because we didn't spend a week building relationships. You know what? We got to build relationships all the time. So we spent a couple of days to get in the routines. Our kids are fantastic. And so they immediately launched their curriculum then. And seeing that happen a lot earlier, we know, we knew we needed to do that because we left in March. And so our data was lower than what we expected. There's definitely a dip from school closure. I'd say that's one of the, how did that happen? And so we know that we just got to double down and get there. Doesn't mean we're leaving kids behind or we're just going to say, well, we had a school closure. No, no, we're service to this community and to our families and our children who was involved. So we're continuing with that. We've kind of like increased our like pace in some ways and then bring it into the staff to look for revenues and restrictions too. One of our next steps, individualized instruction for all. Our coaching has changed to student-focused, student-based, which is a way, rather than being on a schedule that you have to work with. It means it will lead towards a student and then coaching into what each of our teaching do that way. Classroom plans including each student based on what they need to do there. And then team planning, that's one of the things that we're working on, data curriculum and instruction, the triad. And then the BLT, coming back to the BLT, our building leadership teams, really looking at what is the data telling us, looking at processes to navigate through that, to know that data is a place where we are in that moment, not who we are. That's really important. And then looking for topics and how can we address some other things that come up to align ourselves? Those snack words like I talked about through BLT. And then some other things too that we are looking at, writing, are we going to put that in our report section? Because I think it's a tool, there's lots of information there. So student achievement is our primary focus. And then figuring out how do we not ever think that we're leaving anyone behind, even our parents, our students that aren't physically present with us? So that's really important.
All right, so very similar here. The one thing I will say is we have, because we're content-specific, the reading stuff, teacher's notes, the old checks, writing, pre-post, on-demand stuff. When we look at our other content areas, there's a lot of pre-testing that goes on, there's a lot of post-testing that goes on. People are going to math lesson. If students have, have done their math homework and they get X number right, we're going to have network on these problems. They get X number right, we're going to work on these problems. So they're individualizing construction for our kids as well. Alex is using over at the intermediate school on a regular basis in all of our math classes. The one thing that we have done a lot more of is having exit tickets at the end of the lesson. So after the lesson is done, kids fill out an exit ticket so the teachers can then use that to figure out what they're going to do for their next day's lesson or progress onwards. What are our next steps? Vertical T meetings by content theory, we did a lot of that on Thursday. Katie Globek did a great job with our language arts teachers and our, and our social studies teachers. And Mary did a great job with our science teachers. But just having an opportunity to be talking vertically so that we know what's going on in fifth grade, sixth grade, seventh grade, and eighth grade by content area. The BLT, as, as Becca mentioned, that is really, for me, and I'm sure the same is true for her, it's a sounding board of how we happen to be doing at our school and the things that we can celebrate, the things that we need to work on. So we have a very trusting BLT here. I'm sure that you have the same over the primary school. We don't very often compare notes with our BLTs, very, very seldom we do that. But we're still working for one thing and that's working for our kids. And the last thing I wanted to leave you with, and Becca, you probably can see this, but if you guys remember way back when, Dee, you will remember this, those stones were out in Stonehenge way out back where the garden used to be. Well, those have all been moved in there between the primary school and intermediate school. One of our former students, that's feeding with this Eagle Scout project, we got them all moved. Mulch around them, there's a couple of maple trees, there's kindness stones that happen to be on either end. But it's just one of the things where our students, when they leave here, they want to come back and leave a mark on our school. So Matt, you did that. And the sixth graders have actually come up with some new games, use those rocks. They are six feet spaced apart, I made sure of that. But it's a, it's a great, another learning space that we have outside and it's also a good recess time. So just wanted to give Matt a shout out. That's it, thanks you, Jim. Absolutely.
Okay, we're on to new business. We have approval of the 2021 district's budget tax bonus action and the specific wording that we need to do.
Let's just look at the administration, just looking, obviously, all of our key factors have come, come in. And with the levy, with their student enrollment counts, with the property value as well as state aid. Ultimately, it sets the tax levy at right around four dollars, or does not round, four dollars and thirty-five cents per thousand dollars of valuation of property tax. So just looking for a motion to be made regarding Fund 10, 38, 41, and total tax levy. But the motion does have to be read as here.
Any motions?
To make a motion to represent, certify the tax levies of Fund 10, four million, five hundred and thirty thousand, seven hundred dollars. Fund 38, sixty-three thousand, nine hundred and sixteen dollars. Fund 41, one thousand dollars for a total tax levy of four million, five hundred and ninety-five thousand, six hundred and sixteen dollars. He resolved that the property tax levy deposited to 2021 Burton Community School District operation be set at four million, five hundred and ninety-five thousand, six hundred and sixteen dollars. And that the necessary certification be forwarded to the clerk of the appropriate municipality. This establishes an overall of four dollars, thirty-five cents per thousand dollars of valuation for property tax.
Hey, we have a motion?
Sorry.
We have a question. Is there any discussion in the 2021 district budget? Hearing none, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Hold at the same time. Motion is here. Okay, we are on to future meetings.
So the last one in the month is November 30th. Everybody agree with that for the next school board meeting? We've had a request to move it to seven o'clock. The main topic there, one of the topics that we will preview after the 21, 22 school year student calendar. So right now, Arrowhead is kind of working on theirs and we've got a meeting on Wednesday to kind of talk a little bit more about calendars. So I'll have something ready for the board to consider November 30th. And then some other variables.
Is moving it to seven o'clock just a one month or does that need to be going forward?
Just the one month, that's for me.
So we can move to the sixth.
That's fine, we'll move back to that.
Any other agenda for the board? Okay. We'll just have to schedule.
Will make a motion to adjourn?
Yes. We have a second by Katie. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Hold at the same time. Meeting is adjourned. Thank you all.